Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:30 on Tuesday, January 21st. Recognition of members present, all council members are present with the exception of Council Archer, who didn't notify us that he was going to be on vacation. We hope he's enjoying it. I'd like to invite the public to join the council in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, under General, we have no General Items. Agenda Item 5, Committee Correspondence to Council. Any councilors have any committee correspondence they'd like to share? Counselor Minter?
I just want to say that the Transit Committee is going to be having a big meeting on Thursday, half-day meeting, meeting with all the board members and doing some member education, if you will, as well as looking at a strategic plan for the coming years. So, we're looking forward to that on Thursday.
Thank you very much. Any other councilors? Moving on to Agenda Item 6, Public Comment. The only public comment we have is Rob Biggs. Rob, would you come on up to the podium, say your name, address, and please speak into the mic.
Rob Biggs, 92 Middle Street, also the Executive Director of Socco Main Street. And I wanted to thank Counselor Lynn Copeland and Officer Morgan Royal, who's also the TA Resource Officer, for having our first, Socco Main Street did our first Storytime at the Scoop this last Saturday. We had a good group of kids. They read six books and we had a lot of fun. And just again, want to thank their support. We're going to have other councilors and we're, next week, we're going to have actually some Thornton Academy Middle School 8th grade students reading. So, we'll work our way along through that group. But thanks a lot, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. That was the only sign-up for public comment. Are there any other folks that would like to sign up? I'd like to bring up the School Board Liaison, Steve Scheiman. Please say your name and position.
Yes, Steve Scheiman, I'm now with the School Board, I'm now Vice Chair. In fact, that's one of the things that you should know, the last meeting, Art Tardif was elected Chair of the School Board, and I was elected Vice Chair. There is no meeting, it's on the city calendar, there was a meeting Wednesday, which will not be a workshop with, between the School Board and the council. And so, there is no meeting on Wednesday. I understand on Thursday, there is a Steering Committee meeting, which is on the, on the School Board, is the Infrastructure Committee, to go over school development. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Seeing none, moving on to Agenda Item 7, Approval of the Minutes, their motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion by Counselor Minter and second by Counselor Copeland, to approve the minutes for January 6, 2020, and January 13, 2020. Any amendments? Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minter?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
6-0, motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, Consent Items. We have appointments to the Zoning Board of Appeals under Item A, and appointments to zoning, excuse me, Socco Shoreline Commission under Item B. Is there a motion?
Well, I'd like to remove Item A from the consent agenda. I move to remove Item A from the consent.
Second.
It's been a motion made by Counselor Copeland, second by Counselor Johnston, to move Item A from the consent agenda down to the action items. Any objection? Seeing none. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minter?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 to move Item A down to action items. That leaves the remaining Item B, appointments to Socco Shoreline Commission, under consent agenda. Any further amendments? Any discussion? Is there a motion?
I move to accept Item B under the consent items.
Been a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda by Counselor Copeland. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second by Counselor Minter. Any discussion? Counselor Copeland?
I just want to thank the folks who work on these committees throughout our city. It's a great opportunity to serve your community, and it is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minter?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
6-0, motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item 9, Action Items. We have, first up is Item A, Public Hearing Renewal Application for Special Entertainment Permit, River Winds Farm and Estate. Would, would anyone like to take up Item A?
Prior to...
To moving through that, and Item A of the consent agenda?
Of the consent agenda, I will need to recuse myself. My husband is on the list of people who are going to be voted in.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to read Item A.
Thank you.
Be it ordered, City Council confirmed the mayor's appointment of Jeffrey Grossman and Gregory Copeland as associate members to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a five-year term to begin January 21st, 2020, and expires on September 16th, 2025. I move to approve the order.
Been a motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Minter, and second by Counselor Gunn. Any discussion? And this is to approve the appointments to the Zoning Board of Appeals, seeing no discussion. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Minter?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0, and one abstention. Thank you to all those folks who have taken on the opportunity to serve the city in these capacities. Moving on to Action Item A, Public Hearing Renewal Application for Special Entertainment Permit, River Winds Farm and Estate. Do we have a motion? Counselor Minter?
Beth Austin, doing business at River Wind Farms and Estate, 121 Loudoun Road, has applied for a renewal special entertainment permit. The permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised the public hearing in accordance with the Socco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment, Section 93-2. I move to open the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Minter, and second by Counselor Copeland, to open the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minter?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. We are now in open, open hearing, public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak on this matter? If you could just state your name and address for the record, and also speak clearly into the mic. Sometimes they're a little troublesome. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Inga Brown, and I live at 161 Simpson Road. I understand that this is a renewal permit, identical to the one approved in 2019. And I'm not familiar with the contract zone agreement details of this particular property. My question, really needing more clarifying information, I understand that the hours for the permit, the hours are effective from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And I have questions around the 8:00 a.m. start time in the morning. I'm not quite sure what activities are permitted, starting with 8:00 a.m., if it's more setting up, or if the events of the bands, the DJs, dancing, food trucks, and the bar, if under that permit, those actual items and activities are permissible at 8:00 a.m. So, I'd like some clarifying information around that. And if that is the case, then I would have follow-up questions regarding why 8:00 a.m. would be the start time for some of those events. This is a C1 rural zone. I understand that the farm has had great expansion, and is doing a really nice job with having weddings. But I do think the precedent of allowing those types of activities beginning from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., if I understand the permit correctly, I have questions around that for that zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on the matter?
I move to close the public hearing, and be it ordered that the City Council grant the renewal application submitted by Beth Austin, DBA River Wind Farms and Estate, for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. I move to approve the order.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Minter, and second by Counselor Gunn. Any discussion? Counselor Copeland?
I would like some more information about our noise ordinances, and when it starts and stops. And if it's, if this falls within those hours, I would like an explanation, pardon me, from the applicant, why the 8:00 a.m. start.
Thank you for that. I do believe that the Good Neighbor timeframe is 8 o'clock in the morning. But we can always get you some additional information through City Administrator Kane Rath for the next meeting.
I'm going to focus now.
You're moving to close the public hearing, be it ordered to grant the renewal application?
Right. I'd like to have that information sooner. Do we have any staff who might know? Or any councilors?
I remember last year, when this was discussed, and they were wanting to do some additional expansion of their activities and that, that the 8 o'clock hour was more to do with some of the horse events that were taking place, riding events, that kind of thing, and people arriving at that hour more than it was, there would be DJs, bars, and those kinds of things. Those were all more the afternoon-evening venue-type items. But the 8 o'clock in the morning was really geared more at the horse-related activities at the property.
Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Yes.
Can we hear from the applicant? Did you say yes?
Hi, I'm Beth Austin. I own River Winds Farm. This is Gina Martinez. She's my food and beverage manager. If you have any questions for her. 8 o'clock in the morning is just, we don't have the bands going then, but we do have a lot of setup going on in the mornings before a wedding. And I just figured that that is a good window of, to explain when things will be busy at the barn, not necessarily with the bar open, or, you know, loud music.
Thank you.
Was that all of your questions?
Any further questions for the applicant? No. Counselor Johnston?
This is a renewal, so, did you have a full license for the full year last year? I'm trying to remember. I felt like it wasn't, it was?
Gina knows more about bar licenses than I do, if you want to ask her.
Hi there, Gina Martinez. I run Beth's Events and Food and Beverage. I think when Beth first made application to have business at the barn, the 8:00 a.m. window is just your normal business day. We really, we start getting deliveries, start coming maybe around 8, 9 o'clock. The staff usually arrive onsite around noon. Most of the ceremonies take place around 3 o'clock, and usually 4 o'clock's when the reception takes place. Quiet time is 10:00 p.m., so we wind everything down around 9:45.
Any further questions?
Yeah, my only question is, how's it been going?
Oh, fantastic, fantastic. We, I came on board this year. We had 11 events. We have 20 events booked for next season. It's going fantastic, actually.
Any further questions? Thank you very much for coming up and explaining that. Code Enforcement Officer Lambert? Did you happen to find the code that the Good Neighbor?
Yeah, the Good Neighbor Performance Standard talks about daytime and nighttime different DBAs that are allowed, but doesn't actually define daytime and nighttime in actual hours. There is an exemption, though, in the ordinance, and it's found in 23801B, 7. Noise created by any recreational activities which are permitted by law and for which a license or permit has been granted by the town, including but not limited to parades, sporting events, concerts, and firework displays. If you grant the permit tonight, and you have specific hours of operation, it exempts them. So, that's what the regulation says here in Socco on the Good Neighbor Performance Standards.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? Seeing no further questions. Counselor Purdy? Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minter?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
6-0, motion passes. Moving on to Action Item Agenda, or Item B, which was tabled, confirm mayor appointments to Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Is there a motion?
There is. The background is that the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board was established for the purpose of planning a citywide Parks and Recreation Program, and to advise and assist the Parks and Recreation Director in initiating and maintaining this program. The board consists of 11 members. The responsibility of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board includes, one, responsibility to promote, enhance, and protect recreational opportunities in Socco in order to maintain and further develop the quality of life; two, serve as an advisor to the Parks and Recreation Director, and as a forum for the discussion of new and creative programs, including needs and requirements of present and future activities, programs, and projects. City staff recommends approval. I move to take from the table, confirm mayor's appointments to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Second.
It's been a motion from Counselor Copeland, and second by Counselor Minter, to move this back to the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, hand vote. All in favor? That is unanimous. To move it back to the agenda, is there a motion? Counselor Copeland?
Yes. Be it ordered that the City Council confirm the mayor's reappointment of Andrew Bracy to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, with the term expiring 6/30/2020; the reappointment of Cindy Bridges to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, with the term expiring 6/30/2021; and the reappointment of Susan Spath and Candace Eng to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, with the term expiring 6/30/2022. I move to approve the order.
Second.
Been a motion made by Counselor Copeland, and second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? There was a name that was removed, the, from the previous motion, as they decided to join a different committee. So, that is the only change in this, in this item. So, seeing no discussion, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minter?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much. Moving on to Action Item C, Acceptance of Council Rules and Order of Business. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to Article 2, Section 208b of the city charter, the council is required to develop its own rules and order of business at the first meeting of the newly-elected council each year. On December 16th, 2019, the council voted to updates including meeting structures, councilor's email addresses, gender neutrality throughout the document, etc. Additional changes were present, presented to council. On January 6, Counselor Copeland proposed further changes at that meeting. The first detachment includes changes from staff, including an update to the Communications Section, pages 12 through 14. Some of the Counselor Copeland's grammatical changes have been captured in this document are as well, and are in green text. Exhibit 2 below is a link to Counselor Copeland's additional edits and notes. The City Council hereby approves and recommends changes made to the rules and order of business as identified in Exhibit 1.
Motion's been made by Counselor Minter. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Counselor McPhail. Discussion? Counselor Copeland?
I move to amend that. So, let me find this section here. Letter F, iPads. Counselor Archer wrote, in his absence, he asked anyone who agreed with this to, to speak up, and I do. In my edits, I had put in there that replacement of lost charging cables, adapters, and peripherals, very small, I apologize, is at the cost of the counselor who has issued the device. And I'd be happy to read in Counselor Archer's email. Let me just get that for you. My apologies, we get a lot of emails. Here it is.
Counselor Copeland, would you just like to make an amendment to remove the, the last sentence of Section F?
Yes, please.
Is there a second to the motion to remove the last sentence of Section F under iPads?
Second.
There's been a motion to remove Section F by Counselor Copeland, and second by Counselor Gunn. Any discussion on that? Seeing no discussion. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minter?
Sure.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 to remove the last sentence of Section F. Are there any further amendments? Seeing no further amendments, are we ready for the main motion?
Don't we need to be vote on the, nevermind. So, we did vote on it, no, okay.
Okay, on the main motion, that is with the amendment in there, there's been a motion, there's been a second. Any discussion on the main motion? Seeing no discussion, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minter?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. Onto Agenda Item D. Do we have a motion?
We?
That is the creation of a Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee?
A group of Saco residents has requested the council's consideration of the formation of a Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, not unlike the existing Parks and Rec Advisory Board or Age Friendly Saco. In general, the group's goal is for Saco to become a bicycle and walking friendly community, which provides for safe, convenient, and enjoyable active transportation for all ages and abilities. The group intends to involve all potential interest groups, including the Saco School Department, Age Friendly Saco, Biddeford Saco, Old Orchard Beach Transit, the Maine Department of Transportation, the Bicycle Coalition of Maine, city staff, and others. The recommendation is for Bicycle and pedestrian safety. I emailed about that. Did you get my email about that? It says policy. Bicycle and pedestrian safety is a universal issue affecting all ages and citizens and visitors alike, as recognized by the 2018 Comprehensive Plan Update. We support the establishment of a Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. The council hereby approves the creation of a Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee.
Second.
Thank you. There's been a motion made by Counselor Copeland, second by Counselor Menthorn. It was received, but it was after the packet went out, so. For that section.
Well, that's where I saw it, on the packet, so I wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
I think it was just typo.
Any discussion on this? Would we like to bring up some of the folks that sent this letter that's in the council packet dated December 23rd?
Bob?
Yes, please.
Mr. Hamlin, would you like to enlighten us?
How about all of you?
We know you miss coming up here in front of us, so.
Counselors, good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would very briefly say thank you for the direction the council seems to be heading in. It's been my pleasure to be associated with a, a group of advocates and enthusiasts for Bicycle and Pedestrian improvements. We're looking forward to considering where the city is these days in terms of infrastructure. Ordinance is potentially various departments' approaches to supporting bike and pedestrian activities. Certainly also, the school department would be included with that. So we're just looking forward to the committee being created, members being appointed, and then going to work.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Hamlin? Counselor Copeland?
Well, I just want to say thank you to you and the active participants for stepping up. This is really important, and I thank you for your efforts and interest. Yes, thank you.
One question, if I may, Mr. Mayor. I referenced the group that we've, that has been meeting for a few months now. Can, can we as a group consider ourselves to be the initial membership of the committee? Or would you see us going through a complete, a volunteer registration or application form and, and then looking forward to being considered for appointment to the committee in the near future? Or that's just the pleasure of the mayor and the council, obviously?
Thank you. So I would just encourage everyone to put in a application through the board process online through the city, and we'll get those appointed and scheduled down the road.
Sounds good. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to let the council know, and also the newly formed Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, that there's two young men over at the Saco Middle School who are involved in a Samsung project, and I had the great opportunity to go in there and be a part of their project. They're working to bike safety lanes throughout the community. And as a part of the Samsung project, they're able to garner more money at the, each step that they, that they complete. So they've already been able to win some money, and they also got a computer through Samsung, and they're now in the next steps of the process, and I was recorded as part of that process. So we wish them well, and we are going to bring them before the council to give a presentation in the very near future, and I hope you'll join us when that time comes. Thank you very much.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Moving on to Action Item E.
Do we need to vote?
Sorry, going back. We need to vote on that. Any further discussion on that matter? Okay, seeing no further discussion. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
An enthusiastic yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Six-zero motion passes. Moving on to Item E, Ross Ridge Open Space Acceptance Lots 46 and 47. I believe that is Counselor Gunn.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. On November 20th, 2017, the City Council accepted the last remaining segment of road in the Ross Ridge subdivision. At that time, two open space lots had not been accepted, as remaining work was to be completed by Chamberlain Properties. The applicant has since fulfilled the punch list of items to the satisfaction of both the Public Works Department and the Parks and Recreation Department. City Attorney Tim Murphy has reviewed the deed presented by Chamberlain Properties to accept these two remaining open space lots. It should be noted that open space acceptance is not required to be presented to the City Council. However, this, because this applicant has fulfilled the conditions, staff thought it best to bring this item to the council for its acceptance. Ross Ridge was built as a 75 residential lot subdivision, with much of the infrastructure accepted by the city in the years 2014 and 2017. Recommendation by staff, as staff recommends acceptance of the open space parcels, noted lots 46 and 47, on the Ross Ridge subdivision plan, as work has been completed to the satisfaction of the Public Works and Parks and Recreation Department. I move to accept lots 46 and 47 of the Ross Ridge subdivision.
There's been a motion by Counselor Gunn to accept.
Second.
And there's been a second by Counselor Menthorn. At last, last time we saw this on the agenda, there were some questions that were brought up by Counselor Johnston, and we, we thank him for bringing up those questions, and I'd like to invite up Director Sommer to come up in, in case there's any further questions on that matter. Bringing up reinforcements, huh?
She has probably more answers that he's looking for than I do, but.
Thank you. Are there any questions by the council? Counselor Johnston?
Not questions, just a statement. Earlier today, I met with city staff. We went over the issues I addressed, and while I may not personally be satisfied with them, I am very thankful in the efforts that the city staff did to try to address the issues. And I have their assurance going forward that they will, you know, work extra hard to make sure compliance is an, is an issue that they take, you know, to heart, so that's it.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you very much. Sorry. Thought there would be some questions. Seeing no questions, roll call vote, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes five-one. Moving on to Agenda Item F, Street Acceptance Request for Francis Libby Way. I love technology. Jim? Counselor Purdy, I believe that's you?
Yep. Mike Mazon, Mazon Development, has requested review of the city's street acceptance of Francis, Francis Libby Way. Francis Libby Way was developed as part of the Libby's Landing subdivision approved by the Planning Board in 2017. This portion of the subdivision includes 10 residential lots. Mike Mazon had initially requested this review with the Public Works Department last year and has since followed up on the punch list from Public Works and on comments about the, sorry, and on comments about the as-built plans and deeds. The Planning and Development Department received the formal request from Mike Mazon in, in October 2019. Since that time, the department has followed the process outlined in Chapter 186. There are two warranted deeds, one for the road and the other for the open space for which houses the stormwater wet pond and was approved on the final subdivision plan as land to be dedicated to the city of Saco. The Planning Board has made a positive conditional recommendation at its meeting on December 3rd, 2019. Recommendation is the Planning Board has forwarded a positive recommendation to the City Council. I move to accept Francis Libby Way as a city street.
Second.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Counselor Purdy, second by Counselor Menthorn to accept Francis Libby Way. Any discussion? Counselor Copeland?
It says the Planning Board made a positive conditional recommendation. What are the conditions? There's no Planning Board materials following that item.
I don't see any Planning Board minutes in there. Would you like to make a motion to table the item?
Perhaps, perhaps our planning people have that information? She'll be right back.
They're in a Planning Board meeting downstairs.
Okay.
If I may, while we wait, I'd just like to make a comment to council, now that we have a new set of people. For the better part of six years, I've had an issue with the acceptance of dead-end streets, and I, I hope moving forward, this body would look to end that. In this particular case, it's not that there's anything wrong with the street, it's just the, the ordinance does not require we accept streets. So what you're doing is encouraging sprawl by having dead-end streets, in this particular case off the Grant Road, which is almost in Buxton, and you're allowing a developer to be able to build out additional housing because it's a city street versus a private road. So I will continue to vote no for street acceptance on dead-end streets until we change that ordinance.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston?
Can I ask?
Counselor Copeland?
Counselor Johnston, is that part of the updated zoning? Has that item been addressed?
Counselor Copeland, just remember that you're directed to the chair, and then we can ask the Planning and Economic Development Director to speak to that issue, your question.
Yes, please.
Denise, would you join us to, to speak to that?
I just walked in on the question, but Emily Cole Prescott, our city planner, is in the middle of her presentation downstairs, and she'll be up to address the question you had about the Francis Libby Way. But the question you had asked was?
Counselor Johnston had brought up, Counselor Johnston, why don't you explain the?
I was just commenting to council that I hope going forward, we will revisit the idea of accepting dead-end roads. So that's in street acceptance, the city code, but it probably could also be worked into the subdivision regulations.
That's correct.
And Counselor Copeland's question was, and forgive me if I'm, if I mistake it, but the question was, is there a fix to that in the upcoming code revision to address that issue?
We can take a look at that. I mean, a lot of these issues are being considered as the process moves along, and as we learn of new situations and new concerns, we bring them up at the Planning Board workshops, and they get addressed. So I'll be happy to bring that up and make sure that that gets looked into. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Why don't we let Mr. Fox address?
Director Fox, would you like to weigh in?
Only because you seem to have a couple seconds on your hands, so. In the, we, city engineer, myself, and the Planning Department have discussed with the zoning, the zoning we know is going to touch a lot of different ordinances. So when you see the subdivision ordinance come before you, one of the conflicts right now is a lot of the parcels that are owned and developed, they really aren't wide enough or configured to have a loop road or a through street go anywhere, because it then runs into another property owner's property. There are requirements for connectivity between parcels, so if they build a dead-end street, they're supposed to leave, say, a 50-foot right-of-way to the abutting parcel so that, in hopes that when that's developed, it can eventually create a network, so they don't always remain dead-end streets. But one thing that we're, we're looking at that you'll see language on is, we don't allow private road subdivisions. So one way to not accept a dead-end street, but still allow someone to develop land they may own, is to require, put limits on, if you leave it a dead-end street, we're going to, you could, you could have in your ordinance that you would have it stay private until, that it can't come before the city as a private road. But right now, you can't do a subdivision on a private, you can't do more than three lots on a private road. So we are looking to clean that up and bring draft language to you, at least, in some of those revisions that might give you the option to do that if you choose to.
Thank you.
As far as I know, there are no, I'm not sure why it says conditional, but there, I know from an infrastructure standpoint, everything was met. So she can provide you that clarity, but from, from an infrastructure standpoint, and it doesn't have as many of the sort of legacy issues of some of the older developments. Francis Libby Way was done very quickly. So it was done with, we, you know, we, we've reached a point where we know we want to own the parcels that the ponds sit on, because we're held to such a standard from the state now for maintaining stormwater ponds, that we want to own those parcels. So that wasn't always a requirement in some of the older subdivisions. You see those notes that say it will remain the property of or something. So this one was done in about a two-year period, so it's, it was a lot cleaner process than some of the older ones you've seen come before you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Director Fox? Counselor Menthorn?
I just want to thank Director Fox for his assistance with the snow removal on Lincoln Street. There was, it's a unique situation at the bridge there, and the homeowners had some difficulty with Biddeford piling snow on her doorstep. And that's what happens where you have a city interface and sidewalks and bridges and all that come together in a, somebody's front door. So thank you again for all your help on that.
Thank you, Director Fox.
I tried to kill a minute.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm all set. Pat Fox is satisfied. I don't need to hear from Emily.
Okay. Are there, any other counselors that would like to wait, take a short recess until Planning Board, till the planning planner can come up and answer their questions? Or are we ready to move on the, ready to move on the motion? It sounds like we're ready to move on the motion. I don't see any objections. Motion was made by Counselor Purdy, seconded by Counselor Menthorn. Had some discussion, and now roll call vote, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes five-one. We are now up to Item 10, New Business, and that is a budget update for the second quarter. City Administrator Kenrath, will you be presenting that, or will Finance Director? Welcoming up Finance Director Glenis Salas. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. You should have received a copy of this update with your packet, and there's a copy available on the website as well. This is through December, so essentially it's our- Expenses are running 5% below the forecasted level, and revenues are right on target. The net operating income year-to-date is 1.1 million. Going down through a few of the budgets that are tracking a little bit warm, the city clerk is 5% ahead of forecast. General assistance is tracking ahead of forecast. Additionally, there were higher-than-normal advertising costs due to several past bills being paid in fiscal year 2020 that we were not able to pay in previous years due to inadequate documentation from vendors. So, in the past, we didn't spend all of our advertising dollars. They fell to the unassigned fund balance, and now essentially are being re-appropriated from the unassigned fund balance to cover that difference. A note about general assistance expenses, we are compensated a portion of those expenses from the state. So if general assistance is a little bit ahead of target, compensating state revenue should be flowing back into the city in the next couple of months. Contingency is 1% ahead of forecast. The school street purchase amendment has been journaled, bringing this budget item back in line. The fire department is 3% ahead of forecast. Initially, I had thought the issues were related to a series of extended disability absences, but upon closer review of our employee salary audit from last year, we failed to add in the holiday hours for the fire department. So unlike the police department, holiday hours, that's 12 hours per employee, are paid out of the base pay lines, and we only budgeted for the base 42 hours per week as opposed to the 42 hours per week plus the 12. So that's about a $74,000 gap, and that is basically half of, or most of this overage, which is $45,000, and then the remaining can be attributed to extra overtime to cover the time on those short-term disabilities. So that's something we've noted and will be correcting for the fiscal year 2021 budget, for sure. The solicitor is 49% ahead of forecast, so obviously, we've had a few legal issues this year, which has made this line item run warm. We're just making heavier use of the solicitor than budgeted. There was discussion about increasing this budget line item for fiscal year 2020. We didn't end up moving forward with that particular request. So at this point, once we hit the full-year budget on the solicitor, those expenses will have to be paid out of the contingency account under the purview of the city administrator. So that is your expense items. Moving to the revenue side, code enforcement revenues running 44% ahead due to multifamily safety inspection fees that have been collected, and that's thanks to Irish Griffith now being a full-time employee of the city, not a shared position with OOB any longer. There is also a high-level building permit issued, as well as electrical inspections. There continues to be significant new development in the city of Saco, and this is a place where we're recognizing that incremental revenue. Another place would be planning economic, planning and economic development revenues, which are 156% ahead of target, of forecast. The planning department and finance have been working very closely together over the last couple of months to try and streamline the way that we record cost recovery revenues on our books. There were some issues with the recording of those revenues in the past, and they were getting stuck on the balance sheet. So, you can see again, now we're starting to reap the benefits of that since we are so far ahead of forecast. This also reflects incremental revenue associated with our construction inspector position, which was approved back in fiscal year 2019. Police department revenues are running 10% behind forecast. In forecasting police revenues, we made the decision for this fiscal year to record revenue, record the expenses of police outside assignment time directly against the police outside assignment time revenue account as an in-and-out. The problem was that we forecasted the revenue amount that we had recorded less the budgeted cost of outside assignment time, and it turns out that we actually spent significantly more in paying our officers for outside assignment time than I had anticipated. So, we actually paid out $43,000 in outside assignment time expenses as opposed to the budgeted $12,000. So, police revenues really should have been budgeted more at about $41,000 as opposed to the $80,000 or so that they were budgeted in this fiscal year. We're probably going to underperform on police department revenues for the rest of the year, and we will be fixing that for the fiscal year 2021 process. Interest earnings are 79% ahead of forecast. The repo market continues to be extremely strong, above 2% in interest earnings, and we still have a very high cash position. We are spending down the bond resources related to the public works facility, but a lot of those expenses are going to be put out over the summer, over summer 2020. So we maintain a high cash position at this point in time. Parks and revenue, Parks and Rec revenue is 20% ahead of forecast. There's just been really high participation in the recreation department activities. Ryan and his team are doing a great job, so we should be, we should be ahead of this revenue target at year's end. And unallocated is 10% behind forecast. There's a placeholder estimate for city property of $10,000. Sometimes we sell more, sometimes we sell less. We generally just keep $10,000 on the books, and we're just underperforming because we haven't sold $10,000 in equipment yet. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from council? Counselor Copeland?
Thank you so much for that report. Item number five is the legal fees. I would like to have a report or a listing of the amount spent for whichever item.
Okay.
And I would also like a list of what litigation is pending.
I'll connect with Brian on that. Most of those bills are paid out of the administrator's office.
Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Copeland, litigation pending would be an executive session item that City Administrator Kainrath can update us on.
I understand that, and I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for Finance Director Salas? Glenis, thank you. I just had one question from a constituent, and the question was, the attached December budget review is lacking some critical information in their opinion, and most important is what percentage of budget used to date, i.e., 6/12 of the budget or equal 50%? If everything was magically on target, what is the percentage we are, we are at? This constituent would like to know.
So, the forecast, so of course, it's not necessarily a clean, like 50% should be spent by 50% of the year simply because of the timing of various items. If someone was interested in understanding what the forecast, like where we should be, you would take your fiscal year 2020 total, which is $30,3,862, and then you subtract, or you would add how far behind we are. So, $30,3,862 plus $1,551,226 gets you to where we should be year-to-date. We can certainly add that column. I try not to add too many columns because it's a pretty tight report as it is. If that's something the council would be interested in, I can update the format for next month's presentation.
Thank you.
Of course.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, administrative update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to start with, a thank you to city department heads and many other community organizations who I've met with so far. I have had an opportunity to make it around to all departments at this point, to meet employees, tour facilities, and learn more about their missions and operations. So, I appreciate their efforts that they, and all they do to accomplish on a daily basis, and I appreciate the warm welcome I've received so far. As I said, I've also had the opportunity to meet with many outside groups, community organizations. Saco Main Street is one represented here tonight. I'd like to thank them for their welcome also and giving me lots of information and background on the community and their efforts that they do for the city. I'm also going to be getting out and about and speaking to some senior groups coming up to update them on city affairs, introduce myself, and take their questions, and I'll have some more announcements in the near future about additional community outreach efforts I'll be undertaking. Strategic planning session, as you know, is going to be next week, Monday, January 27th, at our council meeting. The process will be facilitated by two of our department heads, Denise Colvet and Emily Roy. And as you may know, the submission deadline to have your goals and comments in was today. So if you haven't gotten them in quite yet, please do so tonight or very, very soon. An update on the general assistance position I've previously reported on. City Clerk Michelle Hughes is currently researching the possibility of sharing this position with another community. That's still in the research phase, but we will have someone filling in temporarily until a suitable replacement can be found. This person does have quite a bit of experience with GA, so I think we're in pretty good hands. Lastly, I'd like to float to the council a concept I've heard in many of my discussions with you, the council members with outside groups. Saco Main Street is one. Staff residence, and that is the establishment of a Saco Arts Commission or Committee. As I said, I've met with many of you. I've heard this idea again and again, the establishment of a commission and possibly a small appropriation of funds. Could go a long way to creating a greater citizen engagement, participation, and awareness in promoting Saco as a place of a growing arts and cultural scene. So, we'll see this under New Business as a future agenda item, just for your discussion and consideration to see where it goes from there. But I wanted to put on the table, hearing it from so many of you and groups outside of how it may be a priority for us. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the City Administrator Kainrath? Seeing no questions. Moving on to Agenda Item 12, council discussion and comment. Any discussion and comment for the council? Seeing none. Counselor Copeland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to ask Parks and Rec Director Summer to come up and talk to us about, there was a situation at the 12 School Street Teen Center where pipes burst, and I think that we should all know what's up with that.
So I emailed a couple of the board members of the advisory board, as well as Brian and Emile Doyle, about 12 School Street. On Friday afternoon, I got a call from Main Water, told me that the water meter was 261, which I have no clue what that means, besides they told me it was awfully high, and I had to go take a look at the facility. I brought over Deputy Chief Pendleton with me to take a look at the facility, and we had the pipe burst in the kitchen as well as in the bathroom on the main floor. Luckily for that facility, everything drains down. So there was no water in the basement, no water on the first floor minus in the kitchen and in the bathroom, and we had about a foot and a half to two feet of water in the basement. I called Main Water, they came down, and they shut the water off for us. They had to go within the basement, so we actually had to call CMP to have them kill the power as well. In the three days since the pipe burst, we were notified through this morning, all the water in the basement has drained out of the basement, being thankfully that it is a dirt basement and the ground is not frozen, so all the water is no longer there and now down in the basement. We've had a plumber, Godbout, come today, and he looked over the steam pipes, and those have been drained. So the building is truly renovated now, waiting for either if we go to council or go through planning board, or wait for the zoning change of the city before we move forward. But really, that building now is completely renovated, all the water's out of it, the power has been shut off, as well as the water. And it's in pretty good shape. There was very little damage at all. It was more a couple buckleings of the road, of the floors in the kitchen. We had not started any renovation whatsoever, so really, if we were going to lose pipes at this moment, now is the time to do it and not down the road.
Thank you for that update. Counselor Copeland?
Was there any, were the traps and the toilets and all that all emptied out, and or is there going to be more trouble?
Nope, it hasn't been now. Everything's been emptied out. We've put antifreeze in there to freeze it up and to take care of all that. So everything's been completely, all the water's been emptied out of that facility, and right now, we're just waiting for dry storage and figuring it out once we do move forward with renovations. You know, we had the heat set at 55. We don't know why the heat shut off, so that'd be something that we'll look into. Either the boiler needs to be looked at and so forth. We try to keep it going through the wintertime and not put it in a dry storage mentality. But obviously, it went that way anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilor discussion and comment? Counsel, if there's no objection, I would like to add Counselor Archer's request to have his email put into the minutes if there's no objection. Thank you. Seeing no objection, I will submit that to, to the city clerk, Michelle Hughes, for acceptance into the minutes. Moving on to Agenda Item 13, there's no executive session, so moving on to Agenda Item 14, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second motion made by Counselor Menthorn, seconded by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? No discussion? Hand vote? All in favor? unanimous? We are adjourned at 7:30.